Good evening and welcome to the March 24th, 2025 City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So Deputy City Garrett, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Watten?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Washington? Councilmember Cotton?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen? And Councilmember Johnson? And Mayor Ross?
I am here. So Councilwoman Christensen has requested to be excused and we know that Councilwoman Washington and Councilwoman Johnson will be slightly late. So shall we go ahead and is there a motion to excuse all at this point?
So moved.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and seconded by Councilwoman Cotton. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? It's unanimous and they are all three excused, Councilwoman Christensen, Washington, and Johnson. So the first item of business is to approve the agenda. And this, the agenda contains two executive sessions for our roundtable. So council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Councilwoman Watten and seconded by Councilwoman Cotton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
You know what, I have some discussion.
Councilwoman Benson?
I'm... But my idea is stupid now, I now realize, so I can, that's enough discussion for me.
But we didn't all get some discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, you should be able to pass judgment on me. I was wondering if we needed to move these executive sessions till the end of the meeting, but since this is a roundtable, we can't move them to the, you know, they're immovable.
They're immovable, so that's correct. So.
Disregard.
Disregard, okay. Thank us move to vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous approving the roundtable agenda. So there are two executive sessions during the roundtable. We have executive session pursuant to RCW 42.301101G to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for public employment or to review the performance of a public employee lasting approximately five minutes. Those attending will be city clerk, city attorney Deena Burke, city administrator Mike Chambliss, and HR manager Kim Johnson. The second one is executive session pursuant to RCW 42.30.1101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or potential litigation lasting approximately 25 minutes. And those attending will be city attorney Deena Burke, city administrator Mike Chambliss, and Parks and Public Works Director Jeff Hamlin. No actions anticipated following conclusion of the executive session and recording of this meeting will cease. Council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session for the roundtable. The deputy city clerk will be informed at the concluding time, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. And at 7:00 PM, our council meeting will begin. So executive session is expected to last until probably at 6:30.
Point of order?
Councilwoman Watten?
Can we recognize that Councilmember Johnson is now present?
Councilwoman Johnson has arrived at 6:03 as well as Councilwoman Washington also arriving at 6:04. So, okay with that, we will cease our video. And we will return about 6:30. And again, council meeting will start at 7:00 PM. And we will be heading upstairs for this meeting. Right, thank you. So good evening, we just completed a roundtable and now we are convening the regular meeting of the city council is now 7:00 PM. With the record show that all council are present except for we have excused Councilmember Christensen. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and Councilwoman Watten, would you please lead the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Now move to our first item of regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed nay? And motion passes unanimously and the agenda is approved. Tonight we have a public hearing for AB 25-003, amending utility rates for years 2025 to 2030. Yes, Mr. Galloway, would you please bring up the sign-in list? There's no names on it. Anyone here wish to talk about the public, the utility rates? So please raise your hand. Seeing none? And the, let's see, no online public comments will be accepted during the public hearings. Only written comments can be submitted in person. And we did receive a couple of written comments regarding utilities. And with that, we're going to close our public hearing at 7:02 PM.
What is general, what are general, uh, public comment?
Those are coming up.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Next item is ceremonial oath of office for public officer Dylan Losfar. Officer Losfar has taken the oath of office prior to this evening. Tonight we will provide an opportunity for him to read the oath and then there will be opportunity for photos. We'll have interim Chief Horacey, please introduce Officer Losfar.
Mayor, council members, those in attendance, audience and staff, I want to introduce to you Dylan Losfar. He's our newest graduate from the academy graduating on March 5th of this year. He's now in field training in his second, going on third week, I think it is. Prior to starting with us, he graduated from Orting High School, went into HVAC and was working in that for a little bit. In 2021, he joined the Army National Guard and has been doing that since and decided to follow in his father's footsteps who was a federal way officer and joined the Snoqualmie Police Department. He's doing really well, proud to have him on and, you know, he's, I've heard nothing but good things since he's been in field training and without further ado, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Just want to say thank you for opportunity, love the city so far, got a nice view outside, so thank you for having me.
Testing? All right, please read after me. I, say your name.
I, Dylan Losfar.
Have been duly appointed to the office of police officer of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Have been duly appointed to the office of police officer of the city of Snoqualmie, Washington.
Do somely swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office.
Do somely swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of my office.
As prescribed by law to the best of my ability and that I will support and maintain the ordinances of the city of Snoqualmie.
As prescribed by law to the best of my ability and that I will support and maintain the ordinance of the city of Snoqualmie.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Washington and the United States of America.
And the laws of the constitution and the state of, state of Washington and the United States of America.
Great, congratulations.
Thanks, G.
You guys get out of the way.
Thank you.
All right, next item, this time we will provide, I'm residents to comment on items not on the agenda. No online, online public comments will be accepted during the meeting, written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person. Mail or email to cityclerk@snokawmeewa.gov. So first a few ground rules for those attending Snoqualmie residents who are not present have a right to have their elected representatives perform their duties on behalf of the city. And so we will keep comments to limited three minutes. Please provide, wait to be recognized and state your name and state residence for the record. Direct comments to the council as a whole and not to individual members. Please note this is not a time to ask questions of the council, mayor or staff when you get engaged in debate. So with that, we would like to do public comment this evening, so raise your hand. Go to the podium. State your name and city.
Hi, my name is Deborah Landers. I'm in North Bend, but I'm here to represent a nonprofit, North Bend Art and Industry, which is developing a makerspace just off of Bendigo Boulevard at 1533, right across from the new Playfields. So I wanted to come to you and talk a little bit about North Bend Art and Industry and also share a little of the demographics with the population that we serve. So we serve the Snoqualmie Valley. While our name is North Bend Art and Industry, we serve the Snoqualmie Valley. With about 30% of the population, of our population that comes to our facility for classes or for free programs, about a third of it comes from North Bend, slightly under a third of it comes from Snoqualmie and the rest from the remainder of the Snoqualmie Valley and some from Issaquah too. So with that, I wanted to share a few of our programs that are free to Snoqualmie Valley residents. And I'm going to start with our writing program. We have a monthly write-in, once a month on the second Wednesday of each month. And it's just an opportunity for authors, would-be authors, folks that want to start writing and may want some coaching or help along the way to drop in and have some quiet time to write or some quiet time for coaching. We also have a youth writers group that meets here at the Snoqualmie Library. It's hosted with North Bend Art and Industry and with the Snoqualmie Library. So we have a youth board member that facilitates those writing groups. That is twice a month on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So I'm going to pass these little flyers around so you know that they're available. And then we have a very popular makers meetup. This is a free opportunity for creatives to again, drop in. It is the first and third Wednesday of each month. Again, it's free. Sometimes people bring projects that they're working on just to be around creatives and chat with them about the projects that they're working on. And we always have a community art project that people work on too. So that's two Wednesdays, first and third of the month. We have a brand new teen maker meetups that's every Thursday after school from 2:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon. This too is a drop-in, no charge opportunity for teens from 12 to 18. Drop in after school for a couple hours and create. We have a really great facilitator that's going to be having at least four projects going on at that time. So three of them will be more art-based and one of them will be more science and technology-based. So lots of opportunity for our youth to create in a very informal, casual manner. And that is about all that I have time to talk to you about tonight. There's loads more coming. We are so excited about a makerspace in the Snoqualmie Valley. I'm going to pass these flyers around too. And do I have another moment for questions? Does anyone have questions? No. I got beat.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for bringing the information. Sounds like a great, great program, so thank you. Okay, any other public comment? So please raise your hand. Seeing none, our public comment is now closed. Moving on to consent agenda. Consent agenda contains through the city council meeting minutes dated March 7th, 2025 and March 10th, 2025. Approve the claims report dated March 24th, 2025. AB 25-041, correction to claims reports. AB 25-042, agreement for ambulance services. AB 25-043, sunny side jail interlocal agreement renewal. AB 25-046, setting date and time for the right-of-way vacation hearing. AB 25-047, resolution designating applicant agent for the state of Washington Flood Mitigation Assistance Program sub-application and grant. Counselors, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, seconded by Councilwoman Watten. Is there any public comment regarding any item on this consent agenda? So please raise your hand. Seeing none? Council, do we have any discussion? Councilwoman Johnson?
Just a quick question about the correction to the claims reports. Apparently that was an issue that was somewhat systemic and I'm curious if that has been addressed and we won't have that issue anymore.
Correct, so we've researched, we've looked back in time to see if there's any additional claims reports and there are not. So this is the final set right here, corrections.
And that issue has been corrected for the future as well.
Correct.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, moving to approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? And it's unanimous and the consent agenda is approved. Tonight we have regarding ordinances, AB 25-003, amending utility rates for years 2025 to 2030. This is the first reading of ordinance 1303. Councilwoman Benson, would you please read the introduction?
Where's this one hiding? Oh, there it is. Sorry. Ordinance 1303 will amend the utility rates for the years 2025 through 2030. The recommended rate changes are designed to match rate revenue requirements, cost of service balance, and rate design for the city's combined utility. The recommended rate change and changes are based on 2025 utility rate study conducted by FCS Group. And this is a public hearing, first reading of the ordinance of 1303.
Thank you. So we just completed a public hearing. There were no comments, but I'll open it up for public comment if there's any, any additional public comment regarding utility rates. So please raise your hand. Seeing none? Council, is there any discussion? We also have Dylan Gamble, our CIP manager, who is here to answer any questions. Councilwoman Benson?
We did get some public comment through email. And one of the really good questions that somebody had, which is one that you will be able to answer really well because you've answered it before so many times, is just a rundown of why these rate increases are necessary and what, what exactly we're, why we have to increase the rates. So if you run through just bullet points, our projects that we've got coming up that we, that we have to pay for and that kind of stuff and why they have to be done at the, at the rate that we've slowed down and are now going to do.
Okay, I think I could do that. I'll try to be pretty succinct because it's a pretty big package to kind of unravel. But the general consensus, or not consensus, I should say, the general process has been to look at our revenue requirements for the city going forward for the next six years. We have a utility CIP, three of them, in this case for each of the utilities. So we know kind of what the next forecasted level work is. And we have an estimated cost on all those based on our system plans. So we gather of all those numbers, anticipate their timing of all these projects and we have that as our basis for our utility side. We look at our operations side and how many staffing are required to maintain or meet the maintenance requirements for our systems in each three of the different utilities. A lot of that comes from our system plan. That kind of gives us that picture of how big of a revenue need we have in the future. And captured in that is all the changes that we're going to be making. So things that came from the system plan, development patterns or things we're anticipating in development. All those get captured, then that gives us our rate requirement. And then we have a way of essentially divvying up the bill across different customer classes. And so the rate study also looks at how to divide up the bill across those different customer classes to try to make sure it's appropriate given the different customer classes, say burden on the system, so to speak. And in that effort, we're trying to make sure that no customer class is overly burdened or overly unburdened by it. And so we're trying to correct for that, but in a stepping kind of way. We're not going to do it all in one fell swoop, so to speak, and cause a lot of chaos in the billing side of things. So that's one aspect. And then the last one is how quickly do we make all these changes? And so that is a big topic, but historically councils had a pretty, don't overwhelm any customer class specifically approach and don't overwhelm any customers specifically. And that's been a lot of, a lot of the discussions. So that's how we get to the numbers and why there, whether there is really a piece of each of those steps, in a sense. And then why, in regards to the email, like, hey, I feel like my rates have gone up over time, can you help me explain that? We see a lot of inflation to several things. Cost of living, which would correlate to our employees and staffing, but a major cost is in equipment and supplies. Not to mention we have really difficult timing of really expensive equipment for things like pumps and generators, things of that nature can have year-long delays in timing and not to mention the cost has gone up astronomically. We saw a really big cost increase in the COVID era. That's some of the most major ones and we're in a sense kind of dealing with those cost increases from that still. We're still kind of correcting. There is several things that have happened in the past and we, and I, we've worked through this with council and everyone. But yeah, there's several layers. We kind of have to unwrap and make sure that we're not overcharging and trying to make sure we're charging appropriately is not, not perfectly clear. And sometimes small choices and changes are kind of getting us there, but realistically what we're seeing here is the correction efforts. So I'd say that is the kind of sum of it, but there's always a lot of reasons as to how we get to these numbers. Is that, do you want me to dive into any of those?
I think that was, I think that was an excellent explanation. Thank you.
Councilwoman Watten?
Thank you, thank you Dylan. I deeply appreciate the, the work the staff has put in into this. I still have, and also I do want to recognize the fact that the residential rates went down considerably from where we started. My concern happens to be over on the commercial and multifamily. I'm just not, I'm not totally comfortable with where we're at that we, we do have some comparables to other cities. I would like to see greater analysis because we're, we're trying to right-size this to make sure that it's fair across the board. I'm concerned that some of the rates have had, will have zero adjustments over the next five years. We're already giving it a discount this year off of previous study. And with that, I'm just not totally comfortable where we're at. And I'd like to see more data before I can approve what's before us.
Hey, do you have a question? At what point was there a 0%?
Under, under multifamily is 0%. I'm also concerned about the significant increase on, you know, our largest users particularly that we've had investments put into the sewer plant from one particular party. I, I, I just, I don't have enough information for me to say that I can vote in favor of the rates as being proposed.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, it seems to me that the multifamily group had been paying a disproportionately sized amount in the other direction for many, many years and that the attempt here is to resize that. And that's something that's been a council goal for as long as I've been on the council.
Councilwoman Johnson?
If there's nothing else on that exact issue, I had a couple of other things. Yeah, I would appreciate something that's like a splash page, maybe like a graph that shows how our, sort of where we started with the initial projections of what the rates would be versus where we are now and how we've mostly, the staff and the Parks and Public Works Committee have been able to whittle that down quite dramatically. I think that that could be really nice as a visual for, for us to maybe appreciate how far things have come. And that's been a lot of really hard work and I'm very appreciative to the staff and Parks and Public Works Committee for their hard work on that. I also would like just get a little bit of clarification on the low-income residential customer discount and what kind of the plan is there, how that works, so that I could better articulate that perhaps to some of our residents that might qualify.
I answer. So I'd like to share my screen because I feel like that is the easiest way to get there. There is code language and our municipal code to allow for a reduced rate. And that's in, it's from an ordinance, I'm sorry, this is super zoomed in, I'll try to zoom in further. But essentially we have a webpage on the city's main page here. If you were to go up to utility rates or, I'm sorry, services and then down here you'll see rate, reduced rates. That's in the water service bill. From this point, you'll see an eligibility requirement. And this kind of goes into the breakdown of what the ordinance states and the eligibility of different customers to qualify for that reduced rate. This is the format that it's written in the ordinance. Of course, different considerations can be made for how a different reduced rate structure or anything of that nature can be approached. I would say that just as a, when thinking about utility rates and everything, we did kind of package up the rates assuming a certain amount of revenue could be generated from some, certain classes and customers. And as you all know that we unpacked that kind of major step. If you were going to go down a like, for example, turning a zero rate increase for an entire year, that has pretty big impacts into the rate generation of the utilities. So that's the only thing I'd be wary of, I suppose, if you, just because we just got through this one process where we made a lot of assumptions. The assumptions included this and so, but this is the format that we have our reduced rates right now.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Do we know at least as a proportion, if not raw numbers, how many of our residents take advantage of this?
Sorry, I don't know. Drew, do you have any?
No, I don't.
I guess the reason that I'm asking is if it's a small number that do and are likely to, then if, I'm wondering if, if we wanted to make any adjustments to this program in some way, perhaps it wouldn't have a huge impact on the rest of the rate study. I guess I'm hypothesizing here, not suggesting anything specific at the moment, but I guess throwing out if we wanted to look at this a little bit more, if we wanted to expand it or target it in some way, that perhaps it wouldn't have a dramatic effect on our, on our rate study.
Councilwoman Watten?
I have a question regarding this. It looks like this is indexed and the last time we've updated it was 20, was it 2024? Is it automatically indexed to the previous year's HUD numbers?
It is, sorry, there's a lot on the screen.
It says, you know, if you go six lines down, it says those effective 2024. I presume that those rates down below in the grid are tied to that.
I believe you're right. I believe they're going to be a HUD.
They're based on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Probably a HUD reference and it might even be a Kinkan reference from it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Johnson?
I've got one last thing and that is I'm wondering if we have some sort of a document and maybe I just haven't seen it, maybe it does exist, but a document that encapsulates the findings of the rate study sort of in one place. I'd imagine, you know, like a thin binder of some kind or a PDF or something like that.
Yes, that is the product that comes afterwards. So we kind of.
Before we vote on it, right?
No, not in the sense, the rate study is kind of, the intent is to provide evidence in a workshopping sessions to generate the rates. And then the findings come as a package of those decision-making steps. Essentially, the data is part in the presentation and then the summation of all the decisions and the data points are captured in a study that FCS will give us for future reference. There's also the GFCs we have to work through. through. It's a part of this package.
Counselor Johnson?
So then is there, um, a- any sort of a, a summary that I could look at before you potentially vote for this? Or would it just be, I gotta go back to the council meetings and look through all the slide shows?
If.
And compile it myself?
Certainly. I, I tried to write up in the, uh, agenda bill, a summary of the kind of steps, broke down in the different categories of work, the types of work we did in the rate study, whether it was post review or rate design, things of that nature. I wrote that down in the legislative history section of the agenda bill. But if you were, uh, more at driving on a question of, uh, a document with all the datas and the charts, things of that nature, it would be probably captured best in all the presentations, which we do have linked, or which are findable in our records repository for all the meetings.
Could those be compiled?
Onto, for example, like the utility webpage or?
Right, into one spot so you don't have to do all the different meetings. Okay. Thank you.
So I can, uh, collect all the presentations that we, we've walked through. Um, I'll make sure it's pretty streamlined because there's a bunch of presentations and small variations, but they're usually pretty similar to each other. So I'll collect all that up and try to package it in a way that'd be easy for, um, citizens to find.
Great. Any other discussion? Right. So the second reading is scheduled for April fourteenth, 2025. So we'll be discussing again at the next, next council meeting. So it sounds like some information you'll be sending out prior to that.
Yes, yeah, I'll set up both these, uh, I'll, I'll take care of both these things.
Great, thank you. Right, thank you. Moving on, the first report for public safety is AB twenty-five dash zero four four, Yakima County Jail Services Interlocal Agreement. Counselor Walton, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Uh, give me just a moment. City of Snoqualmie would like to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Yakima County Department of Corrections for Jail Services. The City of Snoqualmie is seeking cost-effective services for long-term commitments for both male and female inmates. And the motion before us is move to authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with Yakima County Jail. With that, interim chief, Horace.
Is there a second?
Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Walton, signed by Mayor Potem Holloway. And is there any public comment regarding this item? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none. We do have the interim chief, Horace, provide an overview and answer any questions.
Good evening, uh, once again. With the rising cost of jail services over the, over the last couple of years, uh, we started looking for ways to be a little more fiscally responsible, uh, for our long-term commits. Uh, we currently contract with Sunnyside for those long-term commits, which y'all approved the renewal earlier. Uh, those are, the Sunnyside jail only accepts men who are on those long-term commits. So our, our, we use SCORE and ISACALL for long-term commits on any females that are sentenced over thirty days. One of the things that Yakima did, who we used to have a contract with pre-COVID, um, during COVID, they stopped taking outside agencies for booking purposes due to the, due to everything going on. Um, they reached out to us at the end of last year and we started entertaining this, uh, new agreement as they're seeking to expand. What it does is it brings our costs down. If you, for instance, ISACALL, their daily book, their daily fee is a hundred and fifty dollars a day with a booking fee of twenty dollars. And there's no mental health services, things like that, or medical. We end up, uh, addressing that in other ways. Then SCORE is two hundred and four dollars and ninety-seven cents a day with a sixty-five dollar booking fee. And what Yakima is offering us is a hundred and twenty-five dollar a day non-guaranteed bed rate. And then if there is a need for medical or mental health services, it's a hundred and seventy-two ninety-two a day. So for those that are serving long-term commits, anything over the thirty days, it provides us another option, another tool in our tool bag to, uh, get those commits and lower our daily operating cost. And with that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, do we have any questions or comments? Mayor Potem Holloway?
Uh, you made a distinction there, nine, a hundred and twenty-five non-guaranteed bed days. What does that mean?
So the non-guaranteed bed, uh, non-guaranteed bed is we give them a call and say, do you have the space for this person? And they'll tell us yes or no. We have the same agreement with Sunnyside. Uh, for instance, last week, we made arrangements for one to go over to Sunnyside today. And sometimes they'll say, no, they don't have the space, which is why we need these additional tools in our tool bags, these other additional ILAs. If we had guaranteed beds, we would do more booking there, but it would end up being our day, our regular, uh, arrest because we would want to fill those beds and not just give them money without having somebody there. So we look at the non-guaranteed bed space and then we just make the phone call.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, going to a vote. All in favor, CI?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously, unanimously for the Yakima County Jail Services Interlocal Agreement. So is there any further report from Public Safety Committee?
There is not. Thank you, Your Honor.
Is there a report for Community Development Committee?
No report at this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. How about, um, Parks and Public Works Committee?
No, not right now.
All right, next item for Finance Administration Committee is AB twenty-five dash zero four five, Professional Service Agreement with BERC Consulting to Create City of Snoqualmie Strategic Plan. Mayor Potem Holloway, would you please read the introduction and motion?
Action would approve the mayor to execute professional service agreement with BERC Consulting of Seattle to assist staff in creating a City of Snoqualmie strategic plan for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Proposed action, move to authorize the mayor to execute the professional service agreement with BERC Consulting for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. May I have a second?
Second.
By Mayor Potem, Mayor Potem Holloway and second by Counselor Washington. Um, is there any public comment regarding this item? So please raise your hand. Seeing none. We have our city administrator, Chambliss, is here to answer any questions regarding this. Counsel, do we have any questions?
No, I guess.
Mayor Potem Holloway?
Just general discussion. The, the only wrinkle I got on this is, and this is really, should be to Kara and Councilman Washington and Councilman Johnson. Um, all the council seats in one way or another, including the mayor's seat, are in play for election. So if by chance there's a rollover, are you guys will be the standing council to carry this through to the next council term, whatever. Uh, so it's kind of a, it's the breakfast analogy of the chickens, uh, involved, but the pig is committed. Are you guys committed that when we come out of this, it's a strategic plan, regardless of who's sitting up here with you, you'll carry the banner forward and bring it forth? Otherwise, I mean, if, if the potential of those changes as a result of election are of concern, we should have another discussion on.
Counselor Johnson?
I believe you meant Councilmember Walton. I'm up to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Walton, myself, Councilmember.
Yeah, well, uh, you're, well, you're.
Yeah.
You're in a play in a different way.
No comment.
So two, four, and six stay. The other seats are for election.
Yes. I'm not going anywhere.
Well, we have a mayoral election.
Uh, I'm assuming you're, you were running for an election in another venue and that you wouldn't dual seat.
That's, that's separate from here. Right.
It's still potential. I'm not asking you to commit, but it's still potential that if.
Got it.
Something happened there, we may have to appoint.
Like a freight.
A Walton Jr.
Maybe. Actually, Mayor.
Counselor Johnson?
So then to that point, it's actually, uh, not potentially, we're talking about what could happen this November. It's not potentially, uh, three that would remain. It could be as little as two and we could have a new mayor.
Correct.
Well, that wasn't optimistic.
One, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
Could end up leaving.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So odd numbers could end up.
In January. Six.
Right.
Mayor.
Right.
Yeah.
So seven, there.
Strategic plan is like a five-year plan. So whether you're here this year and not here next year, this is a plan that you're buying into for five years. But it also includes a lot of public input. And so no matter what, the strategic plan is also going to represent our, our residents and our businesses as part of it. Counselor Walton?
On a separate note, I did read through this and I was very impressed with the fact that, you know, it's a living, breathing document that we're working on and it helps to carry the work forward. It builds on past work that we've done. I think this is a very good investment on the city's future, um, regardless of who's sitting in the eight seats up here. So with that, I'm, I'm very much in favor of it.
I think you said it.
Any other comments? All right, moving to a vote. All in favor, CI?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? And the motion passes unanimously for the Professional Services Agreement with BERC Consulting to create the City of Snoqualmie Strategic Plan. Is there any other?
No further report.
Yeah, F and A. And then moving on then to draft council retreat agenda for March twenty-eighth, which is this Friday. Mayor Potem Holloway, would you please lead this discussion?
As soon as I get to it. Give me a second. Well, and the agenda is, uh, a packed agenda, but fairly simple. So, um, we'll have our kickoff meeting in regards to the strategic plan in the morning. So our consultant will lead us through that discussion, kind of helping us get into it and see where we want to go. Uh, from there, we will have lunch. We did want to have a, uh, and if I get wrong from memory, let me know. Um, from there, we'd like to have a brief discussion on council, uh, goals and priorities of how we're doing. And from the, after that, we're opportunity to take a look at two ongoing projects within the city. And you've got the agenda attached to your, uh, council agenda. So from there, does that sound reasonable? Are there any questions, things we missed out?
How about Counselor Washington and Counselor Johnson?
Just a quick, um, question on the review of council priorities. How long are we going to allow for, for that piece?
How long does Council want?
I.
Counselor Johnson?
So, uh, that was the, the one, uh, element from the original version that I wanted to include was for us to have a chance to look back at where we were, uh, a year ago and see kind of how we're doing, where we've been and stuff like that. Um, and what I'm envisioning is, uh, certainly no more than, uh, an hour.
Yeah, I, I, I think an hour is at least for council priorities should be designated for, um, for the review of council priorities.
So we have, we have our current work plan and some shows items that have been completed and items that we're working on and which priority it falls under. Um, but are you wanting to completely review the council priorities and possibly change those? Or do you want to kind of wait until we have, or like a strategic plan and see how the priorities kind of fall in with that?
Yeah, my thought would be kind of a, like you said, an ongoing, living, breathing document, but I would allow for an hour for council to have, you know, a meaty discussion of potentially if we need to make changes or, or make additions.
Counselor Walton?
I noticed in the plan, there's a second council retreat later this year. Uh, would you like to expand upon what you had in mind or envisioned? And that might be helpful in this whole priorities discussion.
City Administrator?
So, um, we'll probably get more expanding on that on Friday morning, um, when Burke's here presenting. But, uh, that's, that's targeted as, uh, kind of bringing in all the public input, the, the input from the retail side of things and starting to coalesce the strategic plan document itself. So it is a strategic plan work session.
Mayor Potem Holloway?
So, back to your question, I, I think we should have a general discussion where, where we're going, what we've done. And if any of our goals or objectives are off-target at this stage, we take action to have further discussions, but not at this meeting here. But there's probably some homework to do. So if, if we feel there's an, there's a item that needs further discussion, let's take note of it, do it at a later date, do some of the homework leading up to that later date and have that discussion. So I think we can get it done in an hour and then get on to the project reviews.
City Administrator and then Counselor Johnson?
Would it be helpful for council if I distributed that file Thursday morning via email?
Yeah, I think yes.
That would help.
Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, that's essentially what I was thinking as well, is it's a dedicated time for all of us to kind of look at an overview of, of the whole picture and see, um, where we're, where we're getting ahead and where we're falling behind and, um, kind of correct course if needed.
Does it sound good?
Yep, so.
Counselor Washington?
Sounds good. Uh, so lunch at one, uh, noon to one and then one at two, we'd have the review for council priorities. And the balance of the afternoon, we'd have the potential tours.
Right.
Okay.
So we can update the agenda with then, with the time on it. So, right, Counselor Johnson?
Uh, and I think that those, uh, two spots should be enough unless there's anything in particular that should round out the rest of our time. Um, I don't think there's anything else that rises, uh, to that level of current projects. And that will probably take up the rest of the time.
Sounds good. Anything else?
These, uh, coffee.
Vincent?
Uh, there, will there be multiple flavors of creamer? If there is one, if there's only one, can it please not be hazelnut?
And that's about one.
You're free to bring your own.
City Administrator?
So I, I did review last year's report today in preparation for Friday and it was listed as a con that there was not brewed coffee in the last meeting. You're going, going to attempt to, to move that in the pro column.
With the variety of creamers, I guess.
A variety of creamers, Starbucks.
Okay, anything else? Looking forward to the, to council retreat. It'll be great. And you get to be at the Meadowbrook Interpretive Center. So that'd be exciting. Okay, and moving on to the mayor's updates. So, Counsel, this we, this Wednesday, we are hosting, council and mayor, the, um, Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association at the Meadowbrook Interpretive Center. And so if you haven't signed up, please sign up with Deputy City Clerk Garrett, um, to register you. Um, also this Wednesday, right before that, is the Growth Management Planning Council meeting. And they will be making a decision regarding our requested growth target reduction. Um, Sunseed Association, PSRC, and King County are supportive of our request and I'll be providing public comment at this. So we will find out hopefully at that meeting whether they are approving our growth reduction, target reduction from fifteen hundred to seven hundred nineteen houses or homes. Um, next week, the legislatures will begin working on the capital budget. So now's the time to reach out to our legislatures, um, to highlight our request for funding for the community center expansion. That's important to, important to hear from you. Um, the House and Senate transportation budgets were just released and, and, you know, we've been watching for the budget to determine the potential impact in State Route eighteen. Um, the Senate's budget, they have two different budgets. One is a no new revenue budget. And as a result of that, they would push out Highway eighteen in a future biennium past twenty thirty-one. Um, with their new revenue budget, they would actually have, um, the building over three, three biennium and would be completed by twenty thirty-one. So we're hoping that that is the one that gets approved. The House budget also assumes new, it assumes new revenue, but it pushes State Route eighteen out into the future biennium past. The House budget also assumes new, it assumes new revenue, but it pushes State Route eighteen out into the future biennium past third, twenty thirty-one. So I will actually be testifying tomorrow, um, to the House Public Transportation Committee, requesting them not to push out the State Route eighteen. So you please contact your legislatures, because we know several of them that actually sit on the transportation committees for the House and the Senate. So please contact them, ask them not to push it out. It's very important. Let's see, next week we will be submitting our application to King County for the aquatics levy grant. And we will, I kind of update you, we noticed at one point when the application came out, the aquatics funding was going to be at seven point three million dollars. And after we kind of went through and reconciled what they've given out to that seven point three million, um, it wasn't accurate. So we actually, in our minds, we actually reached out to King County and asked them to look at it. And so they have increased it to sixteen million. So now the aquatics grant, um, is, is, um, sixteen million dollars will be available. So we were getting letters of support and we'll be submitting that this next week. Um, all of our city staff are currently taking first aid, CPR and, and an AED, which is Automatic Strong Defibrillator Class and is provided by our Captain Fautes and our volunteer firefighters. So we did that last week and another class continues this week. And finally, um, I sit on the Regional Transit Committee, Representative SCA. And one thing, um, the Metro Bus will actually start fare enforcement on March thirty-first, which they have not been enforcing the fares since twenty twenty. Um, there will be like a two, two-month education period and then enforcement will begin later in late May. But, you know, as part of the education period is that any of those, um, persons that do not pay, they will actually work with them on offering, um, if there's reduced fares, that they would reduce or, um, free fares that are available for them. Children ages seventeen and younger actually get a ride for free, but they also have to be signed up for the program. So. Anyway, that is my mayor's report. Do you have any questions? How about committee liaison reports? Maybe committee updates regional? So Counsel Walton and then Counsel Washington.
I've got three real quick ones. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Ross for attending the best of the best for the Snow Valley Chamber of Commerce. It was a huge turnout and so glad you were there for that, um, on behalf of the board, which I'm ex officio of. Uh, the second thing is the Regional Law, Safety and Justice Committee meeting is coming up this Thursday. If you'd like to audit that by listening in, uh, let me know. We'll be dealing with some, some, uh, updates to, uh, um, some of the things that are around, uh, just justice and, and how things are being handled. It's always an interesting listen, so let me know on that. Third thing, and that's on affordable housing, a couple of things coming up. We will be working on the nine zero three three RFQ selection committee. That's to be dis-scheduled, to be scheduled. And then we have a housing tour of the mustard seed down at Key Peninsula on April second. It's a field trip. It's, uh, affordable housing for seniors at graduated level. And one of the things that the task force over the past couple of years has been, um, keen on is making sure that we have a broad array of affordable housing. So, um, if you're interested, we'll be leaving from downtown North Bend at about ten thirty, have lunch there on site and, and have a tour from, by Eric Bleagan, the executive director. And, uh, and then one other reminder, if you're interested in ride-alongs, public safety, whether it's the fire department or the police department, please reach out to the chiefs. And do that is, it's quite interesting and I will be doing one, um, one evening for like eight hours just to get a good gist of what's going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Washington.
Yeah, so just a quick update on the W I A seven interlocal agreement. That's the, um, agreement between Snoqualmie Watershed and Snoqualmie Watershed Forum and the city of, uh, Snoqualmie. So the, uh, interlocal agreement will go before the Parks and Public Works Committee. Uh, looks like we're scheduling that hopefully for April twenty-second. And subsequently will bubble up to the, uh, council. It's a three-year, um, commitment, a three-year agreement, which, I mean, we, they continue to do a, a wonderful job for the community. You know, the main, one of the main purposes is coordinating salmon recovery and watershed health efforts for Snoqualmie as well as GiComish Basin. So more to follow on that.
Thank you. Any other updates? All right. So tonight we have an executive session pursuant to R C W four-two dot three zero dot one one zero one I to discuss legal counsel representing agency matters relating to potential litigation lasting approximately thirty minutes? Thirty minutes. Those attending executive session include the city administrator Chambliss, city attorney Burke, finance director Dubute and interim chief Gary Horace. And it'll probably take five minutes to clear the room, so we will, first of all, no action is anticipated following the conclusion of the executive session and recording of the meeting will cease. Council will adjourn directly from the executive session and not return to open session. And this deputy city clerk will be informed of the concluding time, which will be reflected in the meeting minutes. So we, executive session. Well, we should be out of the next session by probably eight thirty by the time we clear the room and have our executive session. So we will, um, cease recording and close down the Zoom. Thank you.